I would ask at this time if anyone can turn off any electronic devices. This evening, we have an open public hearing, but before that, the board is going to take up other business that we did not get to last meeting because of the timeframe. So we're going to, first of all, I'd like to sadly announce that Barbara Kinter, who was a longtime member of this board from 2002 and 2019, passed away. Anyone that knew Barbara probably recognized her love for Norwood, and it's very unfortunate, but she served on this board almost 20 years, many times as the chairperson. So can we just take a moment just of silence and think of Barbara and thank her for her service to our town? Thank you, everyone. We have the minutes that have been presented before us. The first order of business is the meeting minutes from August 6, 2024. Are there any comments on the meetings or any corrections that any board member has?
I'll abstain from this one, Mr. Chair, because I did not participate in the August meeting.
Okay. If there's no corrections or no comments, we'll entertain a motion to approve the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting minutes from August 6, 2024.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion has been made by Rachel as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Matt, on the motion to approve?
Yes.
Yes, Rachel?
Yes.
Were you here for that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Joanne? And Al, I don't know if you were at that meeting on August 6, 2024?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And yes, those meeting minutes are approved. The meeting minutes of September 3, 2024 are before us. Are there any comments or corrections from any members of the board?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Motion's been made to approve by Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rachel. Joanne, on the motion to approve the minutes?
I did not attend, but I did watch.
Okay, so we'll take that as a yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And Al, I'm not sure if you were there at that one.
I wasn't, but I watched it.
Yep.
And the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. In regards to the October 22, 2024, meeting minutes, I do have a correction, so I ask that we table this. Our town council did speak on that matter regarding the legal application that was before us regarding parking in a residential zone that abuts a commercial, but his comments do not appear in the meeting minutes. So I'd ask that we table that. And Al, I'd ask if you could ask the transcriber to go back and include Mr. DeLuca's comments. So I'll ask for a motion to table the meeting minutes of October 22, 2024. Moved by Matt and seconded by Shannon to table. Matt?
Yes.
Rachel to table?
Yes.
Shannon to table?
Yes.
And Joanne, you were here for that to table?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote to table it also. And then we have before us the meeting minutes of November 12, 2024. Are there any comments from the board? I know that was just last month.
Yeah, that was one I just haven't had an opportunity to review, but I don't have any comments on it either.
Okay, does anyone have any comments?
I don't have any comments, sir.
Okay, if there's no comments, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Shannon to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Matt, on the motion to approve the minutes of November 12, 2024?
Yes.
I'll abstain.
Rachel abstain. Shannon?
Yes.
Yes, Joanne?
Yes, just noting, I did not attend, but I did watch the recording.
Okay, great. And Al?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. So those are approved. Okay, thank you. We do have our calendar for 2025 before us. I will note at this time that I will not be available at the February meeting, but that does not mean you cannot move on without me.
Mr. Chair, I'm also out at the February meeting.
You're also out at the February 4 meeting. Do we want to schedule that for the following week, which would be the 11th of February? I'm not available any of those Tuesday evenings in February, but are you available the 11th?
I believe so, yes.
Yep. Would you be available the 11th, Joanne?
Yes.
Okay. Rachel, does that work for you?
Yeah, the 11th works for me.
Matt, does that work for you? It does, okay.
Does that impact any existing hearing notices?
No, the hearing notices for February get sent to the paper on this Friday, so that works out well.
Okay, that works good for your office. Alex, okay, great. And I don't know if anyone had any other conflicts with any other dates?
November 4, the first Tuesday of the month, might be an election day. Do we want to change that?
Good point.
We did check with the clerk's office, who told us that the only election was a local election.
Okay, so if it's a local and not a state or federal, it's fine?
Well, I think they said it was a local election in the spring, but I'll double check.
We should just, if there's a special, we should think about that.
Yeah, they're all local.
We should know well ahead of time.
Yes.
Yeah.
With that being said, do you want to just approve the first six months, and then you can check on that and anything else? Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Does that sound reasonable?
Sound reasonable.
Thank you, Al. So a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2025 through June. Dates will be February 11, 7:00 p.m. here at the Senior Center, March 4, 7:00 p.m. here at the Senior Center, April 1 here at the Senior Center, 7:00 p.m., May 6 here at the Senior Center, 7:00 p.m., and June 3 here at the Senior Center, 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Al. All those, Al, on the motion?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that is done. Okay, our next order of business will be Astor Avenue. I'll remind everyone that, I've found my little sheet here, this is still a public hearing that is open. Two matters before us. The first one is open, the second one is closed. In regards to the meeting that is open, if you would like to speak in this matter after the applicant speaks, please address, I'm up to the opponent, address the board with your name and your address, and if the board has any questions for the applicant, we will, if there's any questions or comments that comes from the public, we'll ask the applicant to respond to those as appropriate, and then we'll give the applicant a chance to make a final statement, and we can then choose to continue the hearing, close the hearing, and vote. Okay, with that matter, sir, your name and address for the record?
Philip Silverman, Vicente LLP, 800 Boylston Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Yeah, and just one thing, I just have to announce that this was continued from our November, our December?
December 3.
December 3 meeting. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you very much for responding. We got the traffic study, and I did get the, your comments, the chief, I spoke with the chief today, and he will review it and approve it if it's appropriate. So I appreciate you reaching out to do that.
Certainly.
So, go ahead, sir.
So again, Phil Silverman from Vicente LLP. The court-appointed receiver for the company, David Engel, is also here via Zoom. So at the last hearing, the board had some concerns, some questions about the proposed operation, and asked us to get back to you with some information on that. So we provided you with a traffic study. I think the summary conclusion of the study was that there would be minimal impact here.
One.
What's that?
One, I read it.
Okay.
One additional trip is what it said.
Yeah. And so moving on from there, concern about delivery, and I understand that. I think, I think what I'm going to propose, obviously from an economic standpoint, my client would love to do delivery, but we understand the sensitivity with the town. What I'm asking is if, if the board would allow delivery not to Norwood, but just beyond Norwood. There's that great economic benefit, I think, to the company to be able to do that. There's significant tax revenue for the town to be able to do that, and you avoid what I think are the major concerns with delivery, which is sort of that, that point of contact between the delivery person and the resident, or perhaps somebody with some kind of ill intent. If we don't do delivery in Norwood, you know, we eliminate that. By the way, the town has already notified the Cannabis Control Commission that deliveries can't occur in Norwood anyway. So that's not going to happen under any set of circumstances. We just would like to be able to deliver outside Norwood, and also technically so we're on the same page. We don't technically do the delivery, you need a separate delivery company to be able to do that. We are not that type of company, so we would engage a third party to do those deliveries again outside of Norwood. Next issue, there was a concern regarding people trying to access the facility using false identification. I think what's been suggested to us is that the company provide a copy of any false identification to the Norwood Police Department. We're happy to do that. We'll also put that in our safety and security procedures, which we're going to present to the police chief for review in any event. This is something we always do. We like to hear from the local police chief about his or her concerns about what may be going on, and we get a lot of good ideas, to be honest, in general, from the police chiefs when we're doing these types of projects. So this will be part of the safety and security plan for review by the police chief. Next concern was consumption on the premises, and I think you're looking for an understanding of what we do to ensure there won't be consumption on the premises. And again, this is something that we would put into the safety and security plan for review by the police chief, but it's really a couple of different pieces of that. First of all, we do significant customer education every time a customer comes into the facility. We explain to them, you know, take this, take it home, that's where you use this, you don't go out, you don't use it on-site, you don't go get in your car and use it. You know, we do a good job of explaining sort of the rules of the road of how this works, so that's kind of the main piece. We also, you know, monitor the, the parking lots, the exterior of our facility. We do that as a matter, of course, for security reasons, but it's also, you know, easy enough if we see somebody, you know, through monitoring. We will go up to them and tell them, you know, first of all, there's no loitering on the premises, you can't use that on the premises, and we'll let them know. If we catch you doing this again, we will ban you from coming here again, and potentially we can inform the police department that you're doing this. It is not in the company's interest to have that on its premises, just so we're clear. It is not inviting to other customers to see that going on on the premises. And so we take it seriously, and we intend to do a good job of monitoring the premises to make sure it doesn't happen. Again, we'll put that in our safety and security policy, we'll present that to the police chief as well. The final concern, the ownership structure. You know, we are in a situation where this is in receivership. Eventually, it's going to come out of receivership. We're not entirely in charge of when that happens, because the judge has to be satisfied that, you know, that the future operations of the company are going to be in the best interest of, you know, generally the creditors of that company. And so I can't tell you when it will happen. What I can tell you is, when it does happen, we're, obviously, we've got to get the approval of that judge for that to go to some entity, whether it's the same entity operated by, you know, the same investors that are presently in, or it is some other entity. We would have to get that approved by the judge, we have to get that approved by the Cannabis Control Commission. They're going to do background checks on everybody that would be involved. They do interviews of both the receiver and the people working at this company, and the company that this would be transferred to. And in addition, we would have to go before the select board and have their approval. So there's a lot of steps that you have to take and a lot of safeguards for the community to make sure that, you know, you're, you're going to sort of be in the future with a company that you have a comfort level with. And we intend to, both at the local level and the state level, you know, get the approvals we need. And we're happy to provide notice to this board as well, you know, of, of that proposed change. And then the last piece that was raised were sort of what we call buffer issues, that there are certain sensitive uses under the law that these types of facilities have to be removed from. I understand there are daycare facilities in the general area. A couple of things, and I think I'd sort of neglected to mention this last time, that technically what the law says is that the only buffer that exists under state law is a buffer from schools K through 12. The medical actually had a buffer from daycares, and the phrase was, you know, places where children generally congregate. That does not exist here. It's 500 feet from a school K through 12. There are no schools K through 12. I know there are some daycares, three in particular, one is, one is about 800 feet away, another one is, I think, 900 feet away, and another one significantly more than that. So there is no school, even though there are daycares that are well over 500, and that's not really one of the uses that, you know, are prohibited in terms of the 500-foot buffer under state law. So I hope I've addressed the questions that the board had, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, appreciate that. I do want to know for the board's information, the Cannabis Control Commission approved as, as a regular marijuana last week? Is that correct? I got a call from the town manager, said it was approved at the state level already?
The, I think the, the host community agreement has been approved.
Okay, the host community.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was speaking to. Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Matt, anything for the applicant?
Just two questions. Have you guys been cited by the Cannabis Control Commission at all for any issues, problems?
No regulatory issues at all.
And have there been any issues with respect to the Norwood Police Department?
Not that we've been made aware of, no.
That's it, that's all I have.
Rachel?
In your experience, how does it work with the connection between the HCA and the zoning permit? Because it sounds like a lot of, like, the hours and things like that are all regulated by the HCA.
Right.
But it has a termination date, subject to future, you know, amendment or things like that. So do we, do we incorporate these items the same as they are, exist in this HCA that was just approved?
I don't think you need to do that. I think you're welcome to, but I don't, you know, if you wanted to put a statement in that, you know, all of the conditions present in the HCA are also applicable here, I think that's fine. But they're going to apply one way or another, whether you do or you don't, because the select board, you know, through that host community agreement, has a lot of control over, and oversight over what we're able to do.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question.
Yep. Okay. Shannon?
Yeah, just relating to the delivery, I know that you said that Norwood has already proactively gone to the state and said that we are not allowing delivery here.
Yep.
I guess, are you aware of, have other communities around us done that, or have we really done that because we already have a facility in town?
They, I didn't take a look at who has and who hasn't. I mean, I would, I would tell you, it's probably over 60% of the communities in Massachusetts allow delivery, but I don't know the specific communities surrounding you.
Okay. Nothing else right now?
Okay, thank you. Joanne? Al, do you have any questions for the applicant? Just, can we unmute Al? Hold on, Al, we're going to get you unmuted there.
I think, Al, you might have to unmute yourself, unfortunately. Which is, it's the small speaker button. You could also type any questions that you have into the chat. It's not going to let me unmute him.
We'll come back to Al while we're trying to do that. So the host community agreement with the selectmen says no deliveries in Norwood, but deliveries allowed outside of Norwood?
I don't think it covers delivery at all.
Okay. I know it covers the hours.
Yep, it does.
And I wasn't happy with that hour, but...
I understand.
That's not in our purview. I don't really see any difference in the delivery, other than that I would condition, again, to the procedure, whatever it is, that you get the review and approval of the police chief.
Of course.
So, yeah. But I don't know where the other members are, I don't, I don't see the difference in my, my issues with the hours, but that's not before us, so. All right, Al, any luck?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Al, any questions for the applicant?
My question gets back to the original thing as to whether it's a for-profit or not-for-profit when they spin off this thing from the receiver.
So it's nonprofit right now. It, it really is going to depend upon, you know, what, what happens at that point. It may well be that this company, if they continue, the present company continues to run it, that they'll continue as a nonprofit. They may choose not to continue as a nonprofit. They have that election under state law. If it's a, another company that comes in and buys the assets out of this company, they'll have that same choice. Do they want to run it as a for-profit or a nonprofit? So I can't tell you that right now, but again, we're going to, we're going to put that before the select board and the Cannabis Control Commission, and we're going to notify you of that as well.
How many members are interested, or how many companies are interested in taking this thing out of receivership?
Um, you know, I, it's hard for me to tell you right now, because we haven't seen how the company performs under these adult-use regulations. If the company is doing well, there might be a significant number of people that want to do it. If the company is middling or worse, that will restrict the market for who might want to do this. So, you know, I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you what was going to happen in the future regarding that, but a lot really depends upon seeing the operation and how it goes, and that will sort of, I think, direct the receiver in how best to, to do his job.
Do you have a timeline from the receiver as to when they're going to make a decision?
Again, it, I don't, because it's not entirely up to the receiver, it's also up to the judge, but they're going, what they're going to want to do is see it operate. They're going to want to see, again, you know, what type of a customer base can be built here, because that's going to help determine what the value of this is. And, you know, the receiver's job is to try to maximize the value so that the creditors that haven't been paid by the company can get the maximum possible. So he's going to want to see, how does this operate in, in the adult-use realm as opposed to just the medical?
Wouldn't you be better off continuing this until there's some sort of decision made?
No, because if we continue this, then we have no way of making a judgment about the value of the company, because we can't proceed adult use, you know, if we just keep continuing this. We, we need to, really need the opportunity to operate under the adult-use regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
So one last question.
Yes, go ahead, absolutely.
So if a, if a surrounding town allowed delivery, and your company was providing delivery to a town, they would have an opportunity to go to the state to say that that was something that they would like to restrict in their town? And I guess if they did that, would you then be notified?
Yeah, we, I mean, we're not technically the delivery company.
Right.
Okay? So, but we do, you know, if an order comes in, you're going to know the town, and the first thing that's going to happen is you're going to check, is that a place where marijuana can be delivered? And the delivery company itself is going to do the same thing, because they don't want to lose their license by delivering to somebody in a town that doesn't allow it.
But even if the town is not the host of the facility, it still has the ability to opt out of that.
It does. Every town in Massachusetts, whether they have a place or not, can opt out of delivery.
Great, thank you.
So has the, has the town fathers, the selectmen, selectwoman voted not to allow delivery in Norwood from any cannabis delivery company in the state?
I'm not sure that that was a select board decision, or it might have. I think all you need to do is have some authority, it may well have been your town manager, that notifies the CCC that they're not allowing delivery. You know, what I know is, when you look, there's like a, there's a, you know, a website at the CCC, and it has a list of the status of delivery in every municipality in Massachusetts, and it's very clear that Norwood does not allow it.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else? All right, thank you, sir. We, the public hearing is still open, so if there's anyone like to address the board on this matter, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Yes, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Carolyn Barrows, 576 Naposus Street. I just add a curiosity, just clarification. You're going to be running an adult marijuana business as a nonprofit?
You may address.
So I'm just curious, because does then that impact your tax revenue that gets returned to the town?
It does not impact the tax revenue that gets returned to the town.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I know tax breaks and everything.
Yep.
And then about the monopoly issue that came up last time? I'm just curious, does that still hold that this will be the only one that's allowed in Norwood? So it will remain a monopoly?
That's correct.
As far as we can see?
They're, and the town council can address it, they're not allowed. This is what we call grandfathered in, if I'm correct? Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anyone else here? Is there anyone at GoToMeeting that would like to address the, the board on this matter?
Anyone who's on Google Meet, you can use the raise hand feature at the bottom to let us know if we don't see you waving.
Okay. And I forgot to announce, this is being recorded by Google Meet, and MCM does a great job. Okay, if there's no further discussion amongst the board, we could take a motion to close the public hearing?
I did have a question for Council on their memo on some of the points.
Could you, maybe you can stay right there if you'd like. If you could just come up and, just so the, the folks that are watching, the folks that are here know, if you are, we all know who you are, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, Etty Singer, Town Council.
Thank you.
Thanks. So it looks like your memo and proponent council memo are consistent on that application of school entrance?
Yeah.
And do we have, like, the independent discretion to capture kind of those, that old rule of places where children tend to congregate? Do we have the authority to have restrictions in relation to that, or no? Because it's, that's just the purview of the CCC.
Right, so that has actually been repealed, so it's not in effect anymore.
Okay.
The only rules that exist right now are the two that, about the school entrance. That's the only one for both medical and adult use. The only thing the town was able to do was to, like, lessen the distance between a school entrance, which is not relevant, because there is no schools.
Right, okay.
But the, the language where children commonly congregate is not, is repealed, so they can't do anything about that right now.
Okay, and then is your understanding consistent with proponents' counsel that any town, regardless of whether they have a marijuana dispensary in their town, can prohibit any deliveries within their town from other locations?
Yeah, so I reviewed that same database. It's a very straightforward database. The delivery was an opt-in, opt-out option. That might change in the future, I don't know. And there are a lot of regulations about delivery that if you opt in, you would have to follow, but that wouldn't be relevant here in Norwood. But that wouldn't be relevant here in Norwood, so that would, that's why the applicant is proposing to do it beyond Norwood, outside of the jurisdiction. And the delivery, third-party company that would be delivering would have, you know, structures in place that they know which ones towns are allowed, or towns that aren't allowed. That might change in the future. Like, they might open that up again, because I think it was put in pretty early on.
Okay, thank you.
Just to that point, so Norwood did opt out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I saw that too.
Okay, thank you, council.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, any?
Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
One more.
Yep.
Item.
Yes, go ahead.
In reading the, in reading the Murphy, Hess, Kumie, and Lahane noted, and the other one from Vincente, it doesn't seem like we have a chance of doing anything other than granting. Am I misinterpreting those?
No, I think you're correct, and we can place some conditions on it, but certainly, we don't really have a lot to hang our hat on to vote no on this matter, on this matter.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Al.
With that being said, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And moved by Shannon to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Rachel, Al, to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Matt to close the public hearing, because, Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
All right, yes, to close the public hearing. And my only thoughts on this is, is what they remain before, that you receive review and approval of a plan regarding someone presents you with one of your employees with a fake ID, and also, I know that we're not delivering in Norwood, but I think you should present a plan, and I would condition it that the police chief approves for delivery, because we, you know, it's a sensitive thing, and sometimes, especially with deliveries and fake IDs and those things. So, those are my only comments, and those are my only conditions. Joanne, do you have anything to add? I know you're not fully in the sound of the room.
No, no.
Uh, Shannon, anything?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't love the idea that we're not comfortable with deliveries in our town, of opening that up in other towns, but because they have the opportunity to go to the state and proactively opt out of it, I think, you know, they still have some control in their jurisdiction regardless of the decision that we're making here. So, I think that makes it easier on the delivery piece, at least.
Good, yep. Anything, Rachel?
My main thought, you know, going back to the host community agreement, is there's, there's a timeline on that that may or may not be renewed, modified, waived. So, I guess that's really my question, is the extent of direct incorporation, or the HCA has an effect now, so that if it were to waive in the future, they would have to come back to us on those conditions.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask town council on this one also. If you understand the question. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to see you all again.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. I, I, if I, if I understood the question, it has to do with if the HCA expires, what happens with your permit? Understand that what we're dealing with now is an amendment or a modification of a current special permit. It was sort of inspired by a change in the use. If, if that's going to change, then it's going to come back to you. If there are going to be material changes in the HCA that affect your jurisdiction over the, the special permit, it's back to you. So, I, I, I think consistently, those permits, if you will, the one from the Board of Selectmen, the one from your board, should work together rather than inopposed.
Yeah, so I think with that, like, we can, we would be able to say.
Any changes?
Yeah, changes to the HCA would come back to us to, you know, reapprove the special permit.
Is that, is that your understanding of it? Yep?
Thank you.
Okay, yep, okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Yeah, Matt?
I'm good.
Okay, so, from that discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve under the following conditions, that the applicant receive approval for delivery from the Norwood Police Chief, and also present a plan for approval by the Norwood Police Chief regarding false identifications, and that any changes to the host community agreement, that the applicant comes back to this board to address those, and receive approval if we have the authority on those changes. So moved. So moved. It's been, motions are made and moved by Matt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shannon. Al, a motion's been made with the conditions. Are you voting in favor?
No.
No, okay. Matt?
Yes.
Pat's a yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, and the chairperson votes yes. Good luck, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for, thank you for responding to all of our concerns. Appreciate it. Okay, the second matter before us is the case of twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, five ninety-six, Boston Providence Turnpike. This is not a public hearing. Public, the public hearing was closed. The public hearing was held October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and everyone present either via Google Meet or here was allowed to make their opinions known. No one was cut off or denied to speak. That hearing was continued to December seventh, and again, everyone that was here, either present or at Google Meet, was allowed to express their opinion. When the hearing was closed on December seventh, the board will not consider anything that came after that because of the open meeting laws in Massachusetts. I would ask, I know this is a sensitive subject for all parties involved, I would ask that you be respectful for the board, and we're going to enter into our deliberations. Okay, Matt, I'll put you in the hot seat and start with you regarding the matter.
Could we, could we get some clarity from town councillors to?
Yes, we certainly can. Anyone that is a, a support staff of the town is able to address the board if there were a question from the board. So, Mr. DeLuca, I'll ask you to come up to the podium again, and please address the concerns of Mr. O'Neill.
Just with respect to the, to the zoning and, you know, the, the whether this is approved use, or, you know, how this fits with the, you know, the rezone, with the residential and blah, you know, it's just the confusion around all of that, and just some clarity as to the whole, the whole thing.
Well, well, first of all, in, insofar as deliberations are concerned, while the, the, the meeting is closed, you're still entitled to get the advice of council, advice of staff. So, I'm, I'm happy as best I can
Thank you.
to answer any of the questions. And, yes, this is a tricky zoning question. My understanding of, of this is that while the Planning Board had initial jurisdiction over, you know, the request for the use of the property for purposes of allowing vehicles on the property. As you are well aware, that matter went before the Planning Board. The Planning Board issued a denial of the request for the number of spaces. It comes back to, to your board, since you have the review over the, the request for the accessory parking. I, I believe that the zoning bylaws specifically give your board the jurisdiction to consider a special permit for accessory parking. And of course, the reason why that happened is because there was a rezoning of this property from commercial to residential. And there's a specific exception in the zoning bylaw that permits a special permit for accessory parking. And that's exactly what it is. It's squarely before your board. And you get to consider now whether or not it's, it's reasonable and justified, and whether or not it's consistent with the, with the zoning bylaw as it stands today. And you've had significant evidence and testimony regarding the, the nature of accessory parking, how it's the same or different from storage of vehicles. The building inspector has given you his opinion on his interpretation of the zoning bylaw, and, and my opinion's consistent with his, as well as other members of the, the, the Community Development Office. So, I, I, I think it's still your consideration of whether or not you believe that this special permit is in the community's best interests, or in fact is adverse to the community's interest. And that's, that's, again, is squarely within your jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Yep, just a clarification on that, councillor. The matter that was before the Planning Board was for open lot storage, which would allow dump trucks, materials, stone, unregistered and registered, correct?
Correct.
And what's before us tonight is just for vehicles that have a registration plate on it. No dump trucks, no gravel or things like that.
That, that's, that's my understanding as well, and that comes as a result of the narrowing of the zoning interpretation by way of our definitions in our zoning bylaw related to accessory parking. Building inspector and the planning department have determined that, excuse me, that that is a significant difference from the storage of vehicles, that these vehicles are all registered and insured, and in use essentially, and, and not stacked up cheek to jowl for storage purposes.
Thank you for that clarification. Well, we have the town council here. Does anyone have any other question? Yes, Joanne?
Um, I do have one. Just, um, I would like your, your thoughts on the definition of accessory parking, given that this is a car rental, and a significant amount of the parking that they're asking for is for rental cars. Do you feel that fits with the definition of accessory parking?
Mr. Chair, if I could, because I exactly piggybacking on that, and I'm looking at the proponents' council memo that makes clear the definition does require that the activity in question be incidental to and locate on the same premises, and if I'm recalling his assertion when he asked about that, incidental doesn't go to intensity. But to your question, they're asking not just for transient employees, customers, but a use that is directly related to a rental car business.
Right, and, and that's my understanding of the intention, is that those vehicles will be in use, they'll be in circulation, if you will, incidentally to the principal use of, of, of the property, which is an auto, auto rental. So, I, I, you know, we, we viewed it as to be consistent with the, the current zoning bylaw.
I didn't want to jump on your toes, but I felt like my follow-up was, like, so tied directly to what you said.
I agree. No, I, I think he, he's clarified that even though it is a car rental, and these are rental cars, that it still falls under the definition per our zoning bylaw of accessory parking.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for town council? Thank you, sir.
I'll stand by.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Matt, so you're all set?
I'm all set.
Uh, Rachel?
Yeah, I mean, I think an exercise of going through the individual steps, I think, would be helpful. I don't think, like, probably going through one, and then two, and then three would probably be better.
Only get, when we get to the decision regarding the special permit requirements?
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I would say, like, I, I think that, I, I mean, I don't have any reason to disagree with town council and the building commissioner that this falls within the definition of an accessory parking use. And it, it then goes to our discretion, walking through each one of these things. You know, we have to make a written determination that the proposed use will not have an adverse effect, which overbalance
If I can just hold on that?
its beneficial effects.
We are going to have to go through that, so I'll just ask the
Yeah, each one.
Yeah, I'll just ask to hear from Shannon.
Yeah.
Yes, yep, sorry, yep. If, if you could hold that?
Yeah.
Because I, because I do agree with you.
Because I, I think it's
Yeah.
For me, the use is kind of checked off
Right, yeah.
under, under the existing bylaws before us.
Right, that box is checked, and now special permit criteria, okay. You'll just hold that, I'll just ask Shannon if you have any comment?
No, I'm in the exact same place. I think we've established that there is a legal pathway for this to be before us, and I think now it's up to our discretion to walk through everything as to whether we not feel it's an appropriate special permit to be granting.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, yep, Joanne?
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, from, from my perspective, on October, going back to the Planning Board, and they are Yes, going back to the Planning Board, they had asked for a hundred and forty-four parking spaces, which was denied by a three-to-two vote, which has since been appealed and is in litigation. And then town meeting chose to change the zoning for that just specific parcel, and again, that's in litigation, and here we are now with that change before us. And the plan that came before us, they were looking for ninety-nine spots, and I think the board, and of the applicant, heard loud and clear that that was excessive, especially was noted in an email from an individual that that lot that dropped down next to Ms. Hogan's house was, was egregious, and that has been removed. And then we heard some more comments on our next December seventh meeting. But I, we hear everybody, and everyone had a chance to speak, but I, when I sit up here, I rarely look to the director butters and how they are affected, and I draw my color maps because it helps me. And we did have two parties in favor, and one spoke at the first meeting, Ms. Carpenter. The town, obviously, is not spoken against it. I would assume they're in favor of it. And then we have Ms. Hogan, who was, is, is strongly against this, but I, I think that the applicant went out of their way to remove that dropdown because her buffer zone at that point in that first plan was thirty feet, and now it exceeds a hundred and fifty feet, and we know she's strongly against it. The next one that's very interesting to me is the address of five sixty-nine. They share the most border with the applicant, and they have the smallest buffer. And I've gone through all of my notes, all of the emails, all of the correspondence, and we have not heard anything from them. Now, I take that as neutral. I don't take it as a speak in favor or against. And then we, at the first meeting, and, and Ms. Hogan has spoken against this at both meetings and provided emails. And in the next meeting, from five sixty-three, the, the Hales appeared at the first meeting and spoke against this, and they only share a twenty-foot buffer with the applicant. And then the next one that it butts is up the top, and we did have them remove that area of parking. We felt it was unsafe. The applicant did remove it, and there's a turnaround there for the fire department. They provided no testimony, but they are signed on to the Neighborhood Association. So, when I look at this as the butters, I, I kind of see a split, and, and I think the, I think the applicant has, 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 has gone out of their way to satisfy the criterias. With that being said, those are my thoughts on this. I certainly can go through what my reasons why I think we should approve this. If you want me to do that, and we want to hear from other board members, it's, it's totally up to you. And Al, obviously, I know you didn't vote on this, but you certainly can comment if you have any comments on it. Go ahead, Shannon.
No, I think that, is it Mr. Smith has done?
Yeah.
I think he's done an excellent job of responding to the critiques and trying to do his best to incorporate the feedback. Where I'm struggling with the application is I feel like they were very, the engineer was very strong in being responsive in the way that he could, but where I didn't see as compelling an argument was the business use and the need. And I feel like because this is a very large change in the use from all wooded, no pavement, no commercial at all, to, you know, really any or even fifty percent, because I feel like the applicant, applicant didn't come in demonstrating sort of like their business need versus the town and the local need and use of the green space. I think that's where I'm struggling a bit with the special permit criteria, especially with some of the other pieces to it. So, again, I think that the engineer was excellent in being responsive to the comments that came up, but where I thought the applicant was weaker was just on their, like, the business case and need for the additional space. I feel like we didn't hear that really at all presented in the first meeting, and after requesting it, some of that information came in, but I, it wasn't as strong as I would have liked to have seen for such a drastic reuse of an all-wooded area today. So, I'm, that's what I'm balancing right now.
Yeah, I, just to, to that point, and Matt Smith had pointed it out. The area of now, with this plan, the area of, that's going to be disturbed, is only twenty-five percent of one-point-eight acres. Seventy-five percent is remaining in its Nashville habitat. So, I, I think that the applicant's been reasonable, and I think they meet that criteria. I, I do agree that the representative from Enterprise did not present, the first time, an awful argument. But the second time regarding the social economic impact, she did said they're looking to grow to hire twenty-five more employees. And, and that would obviously be a community, economic, social benefit to the town, and also, these cars do have to receive gasoline, and certainly our service station convenience stores would, would certainly meet that criteria. So that's where I'm at there.
Yeah, kind of on that point, like, I'm exactly with you on the process. Like, I feel like they have been very responsive and, like, scaling it back at each level.
I'm so sorry.
Excuse me, excuse me. Yes, yes.
I just can't hear you.
Yes, thank you, yep. Your last of members, our apologies.
I do feel like the process, the item eight, and I don't know if it's worth going out of order, but kind of to your point, they've been responsive and adjusting and scaling back each time. The environmental impacts, item four, I mean, we have to consider that, but it's not, on the one hand, it's not for conservation regardless of what we do here to approve or disapprove. There's no protection of the trees. Any property owner is permitted to clear any trees with perhaps some, like, environmental protection regulations. But at the same time, to replace it with a parking lot when there's no demonstrated need right now, that they need it now, and they've built their business without the benefit of this permit at risk. I just don't know that it's, like, we need to approve, like, a bad business judgment when they know that they only had limited parking to begin with. If it is as important a permit for them, I would have imagined that they wouldn't have built it at risk. That, yeah, in a similar, yes, yeah.
Matt?
No, I'm struggling with it, quite frankly. And I understand what you guys are saying, and I appreciate what you're saying. But it's also an allowed use. And I can see a scenario where, at the end of the day, we lose in court and it costs the taxpayers some money to defend us to lose. And so I'm struggling.
The worst side of that is if we do lose, the courts could give Mr. Spiegel free hand to go back to open lot storage, which would be must. And then I see the council shaking her head, yes. Certainly, that's what I'm struggling with. And I think there's a need for rental cars. I came back from New York a few months ago and couldn't get a rental car. But anyway, I think there's a need, and I think they meet number one, circulation. I'll just go through my comments, and obviously, everyone can go through their comments. There'll be no effect on the circulation, no cars will go down the Ponsett Avenue, there's be no ingress or egress. And we can condition this, and I think the applicant agreed, there'll be no car carriers dropping, dropping off any vehicles and any light. And regarding the, you know, one of the, as I look at this, one of the conditions is for every tree they take down two inch in diameter or more, we condition it or recommend it. I know the planning board has site plan review here, that they replace that tree. And there was a comment from the first meeting was lights, certainly, we're not going to allow, I'm not going to allow lights as bright as the Cadillac dealership. And we can certainly ensure that the lights are on the east side facing the highway. And a candle for residential, a candle width is 5.5, we certainly can lower that. And I'm just going through my notes as we went through this, folks. Regarding utilities, they will need a permit from Albonquin Gas. And it's a difficult permit because of the danger of gas. So that is not an easy hill for them to climb, I have no problem with that. They're only, you know, when they came before us, they were clearing half of, over 60% of that lot. And now they're down to 25. And my fear is the same as Matt's, that if this gets denied, it will be appealed, there'll be a third lawsuit for the town to defend. And there's no, don't rhyme a reason, like judges rule. And it could be for our detriment, and I don't want to see that. And regarding land use compatibility, I mean, it's Route 1, it's the auto mile, it's all going to be along Route 1. And we certainly, in that area, they're going to disturb and certainly not only the lighting, but have them plant eight-foot arboretum so no headlights are aiming into the car. We can limit the hours on when they can get into that area. It has to be for employee visitors and rental cars. And there is a minor fiscal impact in regards to an empty lot. And this proposed use, very minor, but it does meet the, in my mind, the minimum standard. So that's where I am at with this. And now I'll entertain, if anyone else has any comments on where I'm at. Joanne, I'll start with you, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, I think my big stumbling block was addressed by town council. My big stumbling block was addressed by town council earlier. I wonder about item number six, visual compatibility. But you do make a point, I mean, it is along Route 1, driving down, is it the DePonte Street Circle? I mean, we have examples on the other sides of the road where there are similar conditions to what they're proposing here in existence, just on the other side.
We can't hear you. No, we can't hear you.
I'll work harder. So I think really, I just wondered others' thoughts on item number six.
Shannon?
Sure, yeah.
And I know you have such a soft voice.
Yeah, I'm good at projecting. No, and I do agree, you know, our Route 1 is like a paved, commercial roadway. But here, we're saying that, you know, visibility of parking in surface areas from nearby public streets is an adverse effect. I think, again, if this was a site that was already being utilized in any capacity other than like a fully wooded area, that would be like an incremental change to it. I think because we're going from nothing to even 25%, I think that is where I'm having a harder time on balance with what was presented to us as the business case. I also think in terms of, like, all registered vehicles being as far away from the customer service center as possible, like, having your employees and your customers and your rental cars as, like, at the furthest point from where your business operations are in terms of, like, the check and counter. I just feel like it's a difficult layout to support the business model that they've presented, and they haven't made a compelling case other than, like, we're maximizing the site that we were able to for the parking use. So, and I think that if there's any number of hypotheticals that could take place on a site, so I'm trying to make a decision based on, like, what is in our control and what are the current conditions today as opposed to thinking about any number of other things that would be out of our control with the ownership of property. I think we encounter that all the time in saying yes and no. A private property owner could make any number of other decisions, but I think in front of me tonight is this very specific decision, and I think that's where I'm landing right now.
Rachel?
Yeah, I mean, I think your walkthrough of the public comments was really helpful. I mean, the introductory language, we're balancing the adverse effect to the beneficial effects for either the neighborhood or the town. So really looking at the neighborhood right there, like, together as a whole. And I think, you know, notwithstanding some silence or some positive statements in favor by some members of that neighborhood, I think it would be fair to say the majority of the neighborhood has affirmatively said that the adverse effects for them outweigh the beneficial effects. And just especially on the fiscal impacts, I'm just not seeing, like, any material revenue because there's no structure being placed here. And certainly, you know, there are other uses to which this property could be put that doesn't require any relief, that would be a structure that would generate tax revenue that may well result in, you know, a greater impact to the trees there. But we're not here to say you can't use property, we're just here to say, given that this would be permitted going through the avenue of our discretion based on these factors that were given, what's the balance there? And being charged under the zoning by laws as they exist now without determining for the court ahead of time based on current litigation for which we have no current outcome or opinion, like, we're charged with these zoning by laws. And we have to balance adverse effects and beneficial effects for the neighborhood or the town. I just don't see, I mean, I think process, I think that's been demonstrated as being clearly presented, that we can check that box off. Fiscal impacts, I just don't think that there's any benefit. And I think that there could be overall negative impacts on real estate values in that area too, that would have a negative tax impact. Visible compatibility, I think we've kind of talked about that, not just from the neighborhood side, but this factor six specifically talks about visibility of parking in service areas from nearby public streets, which certainly you would see from Route 1 and from the circle. And I think looking to one of the statements in proponents' council memo, and he was talking about how we're kind of here specifically because the accessory parking is located in a residential district serving a non-residential use. And I think that section really highlights the unique concerns of parking serving non-residential uses when the parking is located in a residential district. And that's why it was called out in the zoning by laws. And I think that deserves, you know, particular attention when we're balancing our discretion there on the negative impacts.
No, the fiscal impacts, it will be minor. The other fiscal impact, to your point, a building and structure would be a home, and that would be a complete clear cut of the lot because that is all that can go there by right. Without right, things like group homes are allowed without any zoning.
Yeah, Dover, yeah.
Yeah, under the Dover amendment. So that's, you know, it's looking for the balance that we're all looking for here, that we, this board always does. But, thank you. Matt?
I'm good, Mike. Like I said, I'm just struggling with it, so.
Okay. Before we entertain a motion, has any member have, Al, did you have anything? I know you're not voting in this matter, but did you have anything you wanted to add?
Please, Mike. The major differences between the planning board's overall site review and denial, what are the big differences here that would make this somewhat different and more desirable, if you will, for special permit?
I want to put, yes, Mr. DeLuca will address that for you. Al?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. There are a couple of significant differences. Understand that the planning board was considering an application for as many as 144 cars. That's not the request that's before your board. And the other significant difference is they had, when it was still a commercial district, a 100-foot setback, which pushed that parking closer to the residential area. Now, because it's a residentially zoned lot, that 100-foot setback does not apply. So all that parking is now pulled forward away from the residential area. That's the significant, those two significant differences here.
Thank you.
Anything else, Al?
I'm good.
Does any member of the planning staff have any comment? I appreciate your being here. Okay, with that all being said, are there any other comments? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion from a member. That's a difficult one. You know, I can't make a motion as the chairperson, so it's up to you, one of you four, to make a motion for approval denial. This does need four votes of the board, it needs a super majority. So, or, can kick it down the road again, but I think, I think everyone wants this to be resolved either way. I think you know where I, how you stand on this. And again, I think the applicant has gone out of their way to create a larger buffer. I said my comments, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, Michael, with the conditions as we've discussed.
Okay, so the motion's been made to move with what we've discussed, which would be and this does need to go to the planning board for site plan review. So some of our conditions, let's just, don't let them take them back, go forward. Any removal of tree two inches or more in the disturbed area be replaced. They've already indicated that they will plant some more trees. All lighting will be on the east side facing the highway and not the neighborhood. And we'll have a candle light of .3, which is a very low light. The hours of operation will be no later than 8:00 PM. That came up, and they said they could do with that. There'll be no car carriers allowed to drop off cars in the area. And a row of arboretum trees will be planted along the disturbed area, eight foot, so that it shields the, any headlights that might shine into the neighborhood. Are there any other conditions on that motion? Okay, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion's been seconded by Joanne. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Should go alphabetically to be fair, right? Matt on the motion?
Yes.
Rachel on the motion?
No.
Shannon on the motion?
No.
Joanne on the motion?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes, yes, that fails by a vote of three to two. The application is denied. I'm not sure if the applicant's on. Please, please, please look. Okay, if there's no other business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Made by Al, seconded by Matt. Al to adjourn?
Yes.
Matt to adjourn?
Yes.
Rachel to adjourn?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Joanna to adjourn?
Yes.
And I go to adjourn. Thank you, thank you, everyone.